This meeting is being recorded.
Jason, if you could just keep an eye out for Kathleen Schmidt.
She needs the invite we sent to her, if you could do that, please, Rick? I just texted with her.
Okay. Sounds good. How's that? All right, let's get going, she can catch up. Okay. Welcome, everyone, this is the August 22 meeting of the Brighton zoning board of appeals, welcome. Just very quickly, I just want to let you know how we handle our meeting. Now, this is a Zoom call, obviously. What we do is that as your application is called, you will identify yourself, we will have you speak, and let us know as board members, you know, why we should approve your application. Board members may ask a couple of questions. After that, we will open it up for anyone who would like to speak regarding your application. Once that's completed, then the public hearing is closed and we move to the next item. And when we finish the items, we will maybe take a minute or two break if we need to, if not, we'll move into the deliberations. You're welcome to listen to those if you wish. If you don't want to do that and hear the result of your application, you can call Rick DiStefano in the building office tomorrow. Okay, Rick, so let's get her rolling, can you call the roll, please?
Yeah, just before I call the roll, if I could ask everybody who's in the audience to turn your video off until you address the board, it just keeps our screen a little clearer for us to manage. So if I could ask everybody to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, go ahead, Ed, Rick.
Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Thomas Wright.
Here.
Mr. DeAugustine.
Here.
Mr. Mike.
Here.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt. Please at the record show that Ms. Schmidt has not joined us yet.
Okay, very good, when she does, we'll acknowledge her. The minutes, I gather, Rick, is going to wait till the September meeting, correct, the July minutes?
That is correct.
Okay, was the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, the chairman has advertised on the daily record, it was July 28, 2022.
Okay, very good, is there anything you would like to address the board on?
Yes, I would like to make a comment that in regards to applications, 8A04, 8A05, and 8A06, I received numerous communications after the final agenda was already posted. So they did not appear on that agenda. Members, you will be getting copies of all that communication, and it will be posted with the next agenda. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Okay.
I'd like to note for the record that member Schmidt has now joined the meeting.
Okay, great. You can... Ed, Rick?
I'm not sure if any of the members have any questions in regards to any of the applications. We're all good?
Yes, have we heard anything on the old business, whether...
Anything on the old business item at this point in time, I think we can talk about that when we get there, Dennis.
Right, that's fine. Okay, well then, I guess it's time to roll.
Okay, application 8A0122, application John Inzenna and Jacqueline Whitney, owners of property located at 325 Antlers Drive for an area variance from section 207-2A. Allow 6.5 foot high fence in a front yard area where a maximum 3.5 foot high fence is allowed by code. All described on application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Jason, I think Jay Whit... Jay Whit... Are you here to speak, can you unmute them?
Yes.
Jeff was able to be unmuted.
Okay.
This is Jacqueline, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, can you just identify yourselves and your address, please, for the record?
Yep, Jacqueline Whitney, 325 Antlers Drive.
Okay, very good, please proceed.
Yep, we submitted a variance over a year ago. It was approved, the variance hasn't changed. It just expired because we had to go through and solicit and obtain vendor quotes because the first one had gone out of business. So we're just re-requesting the variance, the same variance that was submitted, except with a different vendor.
Okay, so no changes whatsoever?
Nope.
Okay, very good.
Can you just for the record, just explain the type and style of fence, and probably how far out it's going to extend into the front yard?
Yeah, I'm on the corner of Elmwood and Antlers, and there is a fence that will go from the back of our house to the neighbor's fence. So it's like, it's a corner yard, it faces Elmwood. Our house faces Antlers, we have a house and then a lot adjacent to it. So it's not a front yard, it's a side yard that the fence is going to be placed on. And then the material, we've gotten quotes for, the original quote was for wood, but wood is going up in two or three times the cost. So it may be vinyl unless wood drops by the time we get another vendor within a year when the permit expires to put the fence up.
Is your plan, ma'am, to get it done this fall before the winter season?
I certainly hope so, but every time I call, there's a backlog of...
Understood, but that's your plan, though?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions by the board members? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application 8A0222, application of Michael Jackals, owner of property located at 135 Edgemore Road, for an area variance from section 205-2. Allow deck to extend six plus or minus feet and another 40 foot rear setback required by code. All described on application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Hi, I'm Christina Jackals, and this is my husband, Michael Jackals, and we live at 135 Edgemore Road.
Okay, great, please proceed, thanks.
Sure, so we are hoping to build a deck, and this deck would be a total of 13 by 17 feet, and it would be built at 28 inches above grade. And based on that sizing and the location of the rear exit of our home through the sliding glass doors behind us, it would go just somewhat into the setback. Right now, there's supposed to be a 40 foot setback, and this would go into that by six feet, creating a 34 foot setback.
Okay.
It's fairly similar in terms of our, many of our surrounding neighbors have similar sized decks or additions on their home that are already built into the setback by that and sometimes more. Actually, our neighbors on either side have that. The deck would be fully located in the rear of the home, so it wouldn't really be visible or change the character or appearance of the neighborhood at all.
We want it to be 28 inches so that it's flush with the sliding door out to the backyard so that there's no step down or anything, and just from a safety standpoint, we've got two young kids. So just considering that, as well as some of our, you know, older family members that come over, we want it to be as safe and simple as possible.
Okay. Board member questions?
I just have a quick one for you, this is member McKay Drury. Have you, in terms of the size of the deck, have you attempted to make it the minimum size necessary for your uses and what you intend to do on the deck? In terms of, you know, keeping the infringement into the variant, the setback as minimal as possible? Can you speak to that at all, please?
Yeah, it's essentially the size that would be required in order to hold like a table, an outdoor table that fits like six chairs, more or less, and then also, you know, just have a little space next to it. But as far as the depth of it, it really needs that depth in order to accommodate, you know, a table with chairs that aren't going to be falling off the edge.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, any other questions for these folks? Okay. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would be interested in speaking regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application 8A0322, application Megan T. Spencer, owner of property located at 111 Hampshire Drive for an area variance from section 203-2.1B7 and 203-984, to allow an air conditioning unit to be four foot from a lot line and move to minimum five feet required by code. All described on application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Hold on. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
This is not the right Megan.
Hello, anybody, can you hear me?
That was, that was, it looks like Justin Spencer was trying to...
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can be heard, just if you could get a little closer to your mic so you're a little louder, please?
All right, I'm trying, how about now?
Perfect, all right.
When are we going to go back in person so I don't have to play with his computer?
Ask the governor, ask the governor.
Can you see me or just hear me?
I can see you, awesome.
All right, I can't see myself, so I'm confused, I'm trying here, I don't know what's going on. All right, so what do we have to hear, all right, we currently...
Sir, 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 could you just identify your, can you address, please?
My wife is the owner of 111 Hampshire Drive.
Okay, okay, and you're a resident of 111 Hampshire Drive, okay, very good, go ahead.
All right, so we currently have a permit and we've gone through zoning board already to build in addition a garage in the rear of our house. The process has gone through, we thought we were going to get the permit until it was noted that our air conditioner was going to be too close to the line, so then we had to file for another variance for this air conditioner. Currently, we just have, I only have seven foot six from my prop, from my house to the property line to work with, and it's required to have five foot. So in order to get it in there, we obviously need to file a variance because we don't have enough space, because these homes were never intended to have air conditioning units and everything this close. So that's the only spot that we could fit it in accordance to the plan.
Jason, can you scroll down to the floor, the floor plan? I think it shows the garage addition and everything, just so the board members remember what we granted the... Yeah, that's...
For the garage, for the two foot going over on the garage, yeah, right there. So from the house to the property line, it's only seven foot six. So that's why, to, you know, have clearance off the house, and then, you know, a two, three foot air conditioner impedes into the line, so that's why we need to file a variance.
Yep, okay. Okay, do you have anything else to add, sir?
I do not, no.
Okay, okay, and the back of the garage at the property line is a little over five feet, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Back over there, yes.
Okay, very good. And we presume that you have no other potential location that this air conditioner could be placed?
No, because we got the driveway side on the other side and to be compliant on the side or rear of a yard, that's our only spot that we could realistically put it.
Okay, yeah, for the record, okay, very good. All right, other questions by board members, please?
This is member Wright, are you planning any kind of screening or landscaping around the air conditioner?
That's the plan per code, I guess we have to have it fenced or something to help impede it, block it. So bushes, shrubbery, something will be placed in there to help stop the view from the street, obviously.
Okay.
Okay, so you haven't really decided how you'll do that, but you're willing to agree to do something to...
Absolutely, yes, yes. Get this project moving and going along, so yes, anything that's needed, we will do.
Okay. Very good, and is your plan to proceed this building season?
Knock on wood, yes.
Okay, that's the plan, okay.
The plan is yes.
Okay, great, everybody's plans are tentative, sir.
Yeah.
All right, okay, are there any other questions by the board? Okay, great. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
I will read the next three applications, so bear with me. Application 8A0422, application of PMM LLC, contract vendee, and Bristol Valley Homes LLC. Owner of property located at 3108 East Avenue for a use variance from section 203-44, to allow a gas station with convenience store to be located in a BE1 office and office park district, were not allowed by code, all described on application and plans on file. Application 8A0522, same owner, same contract vendee, for an area variance from section 207-6B to allow an accessory structure, gas canopy, to be located in the front yard and move the rear yard as required by code. All described on application and plans on file. And application 8A0622, same applicant, same owner, for area variances from section 205-18 to 1, allow parking of vehicles to within two feet of a side lot line where a 10 foot setback is required by code. And 2, allow paved areas, aisles up to the front lot line where a 20 foot setback is required by code. All described on application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this?
Well, just one thing real quick, I just note that we're going to recuse myself on these three applications.
Okay, Ed, thank you. Okay, so who do we have speaking for these applications, please?
Hi, good evening, this is Betsy Brug, I'm on, I'm representing these applications. I know this is short notice, but I needed to zoom on tonight to request an adjournment. These are kind of complicated applications, and we were preparing for today, and then due to some personal conflicts and illnesses, I've literally lost most of my team. You know, there's questions about traffic and engineering issues, I don't have my engineer, I don't have my property owner, we have a use variance case here. So we are asking for an adjournment to next month.
Okay, very good, well, as you're aware, Betsy, we, there are quite a few people who came on the Zoom call to speak, but I think what we're going to do is we'll allow the public hearing to remain open, we'll listen to comments tonight and then hold it open, and then we're, we'll vote to table your application.
Great, we appreciate that, we will be prepared to give you a full presentation at the future meeting.
Okay, good luck with the illnesses, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so at this time, does the board have any comment before we open it up? Everybody okay with that? Okay, good, all right, so who do we have interested in speaking regarding the three applications for 31087? You could identify yourself, then Jason, I think could handle that. Do we have anyone that is interested in speaking regarding these applications? Guys, I can't see anything, can you?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised, there's one hand raised, Katie Hartford.
Okay.
Can you let her in, please, and then there comes people's hands up, so...
Okay. All right, are you on, Katie?
Yes, I am, hi.
Hi, could you just identify yourself and your address, and then please go ahead and you can speak?
Katie Hartford, 161 Brookside Drive. And I'm going to keep this brief because I saw the other letters submitted by my neighbors as well as an attorney representing our neighbors, who I think go into the arguments in depth in a way that makes, makes most of these points. I just wanted the record to reflect that I and my family are concerned about the proposed variances for not only the reasons articulated by our neighbors in the letters submitted, as well as by attorney Peter Wyshar, sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, but primarily for us, what's personal is the concern of traffic, increased traffic, the intersection of Allen's Creek and East, for anyone familiar with it, is an intersection that over the years, our community has expressed extreme concern about safety of that location. The town board's familiar with that, we've had concerns about traffic there. Often, people coming from outside of the area, outside of the neighborhood, often pass through there, particularly because we have young children who will be attending Allen Creek School, and will be walking to the school. There used to be a crossing guard at that location, which has since been removed, and I walk in that area with my two young children and husband often, and are constantly concerned for our safety at that intersection. So I think that the proposed, the proposed variance allowing a gas station and convenience store along with additional development in the area to include Whole Foods, as well as the Kilborn Apartments that are in progress, just all compounding upon one another, it's kind of a recipe for disaster for that location. We also have concerns about possible hours of operation and the change to the character of the neighborhood. So for those reasons, as well as those articulated by our other neighbors and the attorney and the submissions, we have extreme concerns about the proposed variances, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rick, who else do we have trying to get in?
Peter. What, Wysham? That's me, Peter Wyshar. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I submitted a letter on behalf of my clients, Robert and Karen Bentley. They live at the corner of Elmwood and East, which is kind of across the street from the proposed location here. And I'm not going to, I just want to kind of summarize three points, really, that are in greater depth in our correspondence. I also want to make sure you are aware, the letter that was attached to the agenda did not include the copies of the minutes that we also did submit. So if anybody wants to see those, we did submit those with the letter as well. And those are the minutes from the 1995 proceedings where basically a very similar, substantially similar application was made by the owner, by the immediately predecessor, I think, to this owner. There was, you know, so the three points I would make, number one is about this past precedent. There is, in September 1995, there was an application to put two canopies that were actually, the combined area is less than the proposed area of the new canopy. The original canopies in 95 were also not as tall, I believe, I believe they were only 14 feet versus 17 feet, which is now proposed. And at the time, this board denied that application, and they made findings that indicate that, you know, I recited the findings in my letter, but they're very, they're very important to review those today, in particular, the first three findings. The board in 1995 found that the proposal of building canopies would be a total change in the character of a residential neighborhood. The construction of the canopies would create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and we would be a detriment to nearby properties. And the request of the building of canopies is a substantial variance in changing the character and use of the property. So you know, if this were a situation where administrative res judicata applied, you, the applicant wouldn't be allowed to reargue those same, you know, requests without there really being significant changes. Now, even if res judicata doesn't apply, which is kind of claim preclusion, the board is still bound by kind of precedent, and it would be, in order to reach a different result, it would really need to explain why there should be some significant differences. We think that the current application, because it's covering a larger area and is a taller canopy, that that on the area variances is more substantial than the prior application that was denied. We also think from reading the minutes, it looks like that this may actually be the third request for canopies. There was, in the minutes of the 95 hearing, there was a reference to a prior application like five or seven years earlier. I don't have that information, but I do, there is that reference in the minutes. The second point I want to make, the second and third points really relate to the use variance. As you know, use variances are very difficult to obtain, and they require a kind of a higher burden of proof than an area variance. And we think that they failed to meet at least three of the elements here, and I want to focus on two of those elements. The first element that they need to show is with dollars and cents, proof that they can't achieve a reasonable return. And, you know, there's a couple of points we highlight on that. The first is, they described that they've been marketing this property, but they don't really go into the detail about how they've marketed the property and found it to be, you know, unable to get their reasonable return. They have nothing in the record about what is the actual market value of this property? What was the price that they were offering to sell or lease the property for? They don't have any, any proof on those points. And probably the most significant concession that they make, when they talk about how expensive it's going to be to renovate this property, they talk about how in disrepair it is. There's no, you know, the wiring needs to be redone. I think they say something about the roof, they say something about, I mean, they, they, they have a laundry list of things that need to be done for this property. And then they acknowledge that the building needs a complete renovation for any occupant, no matter what the use. So they haven't shown that it's going to cost them X amount of dollars above what they already say is already going to cost, in order to say, in order to make this legally permitted office use, it's going to cost me so much more money that I'm not going to be able to get a reasonable return. So, you know, we don't think that they've met that element. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was another, probably even the easiest way to deny this application on the use variance is that we believe it's a self-created hardship. When this property was purchased, it was already no longer a gas station. It was purchased by somebody, or one of the principals of this business is an admitted experienced developer with over 40 years of experience. And, you know, they, if they didn't know what the zoning was, they should have known what the zoning was, given the level of experience they have. And as this board is well aware, you know, hardship in the context of zoning is self-imposed, where the applicant for variance required, acquired the property subject to the restrictions from which he or she now seeks relief. So we think this is clearly a self-created hardship, and that alone would be a basis to deny the application for use variance. So I've submitted all of this in writing in greater detail, and, you know, thank you for allowing me to speak. I don't know if you have time limits, but I'm sure I've gone over, so thank you.
Okay, you did fine, thank you very much, I appreciate you just keeping it to the subject. Okay, who else do we have that would like to speak?
Karen, Karen Bentley, you can speak if you like.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself, please, again?
Yes, this is Karen and Robert.
Yes, uh, this is Karen and Robert Bentley. Uh, we live at thirty-nine thirty-nine Elmwood Avenue. Uh, we live directly across the street.
Okay, very good. Go right ahead.
Yeah, we live directly across the street from the proposed, um, variance requests. And we just want to reiterate what our attorney and the neighborhood representative attorney uh, is, has said. Um, we have bedrooms that are directly across the street that would be, that would suffer from light, light, noise, additional traffic. Um, the, the basic concern of property value in a what most people would consider the East Avenue affluent neighborhood is, um, uh, very important to us as one of the major investments we've made as a a couple and a and a family is that we've purchased a house in this neighborhood. And that investment, we would like to maintain the value of and in the the future, actually make money on a sale later on. So, um, I am and my husband are absolutely against any approval of variances. And we hope the board will oppose and not award the variances. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, ma'am, I just have one quick question. How long have you lived in the, your location?
Almost three years.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Okay, uh, who else do we have, Rick? Any other hands?
We have Miranda.
Hi, uh, my name is Miranda Harris hyphen Glocker, uh, G as in George, L O C K E R. Um, I'm a local physician. My husband's a local physician. Um, we have three kids. We live at nine forty-four Allen's Creek Road. And, uh, oh, thank you. All three of our children go or one just graduated from Allen Creek. The, my main points are that we are frequent runners, bikers. Our kids walk in the neighborhood to their friends' houses. They bike to their friends' houses. Um, I will say, my husband and I both have had near, you know, catastrophic accidents where we've been nearly hit by cars running already from people trying to cut across Allen Creek Road. Um, from Monroe Avenue to, uh, the four ninety area, uh, uh, Linden, et cetera. And during the shutdown of COVID, we were asked, because they're short on bus drivers, um, to take our children to school, uh, walk if we could, and drive them if we could. And we started walking last year and our nanny and three children were nearly hit when a car jumped the curb trying to race through the intersection. So it's already a concerning, uh, traffic area. And I worry about the safety of our kids having another busy, you know, place where people are entering and exiting, uh, frequently. So I second everyone's concerns that have already been shared, um, in the community and and just ask that the variance not be granted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, Rick?
We have Carla Casulo.
Thank you. It's Casulo. Uh, my name is Carla Casulo. I'm I'm a resident at forty-nine Brookside Drive. We've lived here, uh, for approximately five years. I'm also a local physician. And I wanted to echo our extremely strong opposition to the approval of this use variance. Um, for reasons that have similarly been stated, this grant, uh, this variance, if granted, would be permanent and it would cause significant detriment to our neighborhood. We feel that, um, this would create unnecessary and burdensome traffic. As has been described, this area is already very traffic heavy. And there are already areas of the sidewalk there that are eroded where cars can jump the curb and pose a danger to, uh, not only us, but the small children in our area. I also have two small children. They also attended Allen Creek. We also walk to school frequently. And, um, I think that one of the things that has not been articulated by the applicants is what the position of the school board is, given that Allen Creek is three hundred yards from this proposal. And it's to me incomprehensible that alcohol and tobacco is being proposed to be sold very close to a school, uh, where small children attend and in a residential community. Um, so I think that this is, uh, would be a very serious mistake. Um, this is a very close knit, and I would highlight residential community that has expressed serious concern about this project for a long period of time. And we feel that, um, the process of getting this approval has has, um, provided inconsistent information, incomplete site plans. There've been an underestimation of the risks and complications of these fuel storage tanks. The answers that have been provided have been very vague. And, uh, we think that, um, this is not acceptable for our community. And I really strongly urge the board to take our concerns very seriously. As you have an obligation serving our community to take our concerns seriously, we've invested time, we've invested money, we've invested a personal interest in our community. And I really strongly urge you to deny this variance and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers?
We have Megan Henry.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm unable to, um, start my video, but, uh, this is Megan Henry. I live at nine eighty Allen's Creek Road. Um, I've lived here since, uh, two thousand and seven. And I will, um, probably not be as articulate as Dr. Casulo and my other neighbors who have already spoken, but in addition to all the points that they have, uh, already made and the points that I've made in my letter, I just want to reemphasize a couple of things. Uh, one, there's been very little discussion around the, um, impact of the gas tanks, uh, what that will do, um, whether it's replacing or installing new ones, um, with the proximity to Allen's Creek. I am concerned from an environmental impact, um, that there may, uh, that there may be, uh, difficulty with the soil, with the water table, um, with the proximity of the of the creek. And I do think in the application, um, a a representation that this isn't, that this is a urban location is just false. Um, we have deer, fox, waterfowl, all sorts of, um, animals here in the area. So from an environmental perspective, I'm concerned. From a non-environmental perspective, a very practical, uh, uh, point is in a, in a, um, meeting that, uh, a representative from Quiklys held with a small number of people from the neighborhood in a Zoom meeting that, um, was cut off at forty minutes. One of the things was around the fueling of the, of the gas tanks. And it was, um, it was uh, mentioned to the neighborhood that even, um, Quiklys and that did not have any influence over the timing that the vendor would be showing up to fill the the, um, underground gas tanks. Um, and so I just imagine, uh, those neighbors that are directly across the the way um, being woken up in the middle of the night because they said that they do that, they do that primarily in the, um, non-business hours um, to a tanker, um, in their front yard, basically, uh, filling up those tanks. And so I just, it 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 will completely destroy the neighborhood from a residential, um, perspective. And again, the sale of, my last point would just be, uh, to reemphasize the sale of alcohol and tobacco so near the elementary school just seems unnecessary to me. Um, but I'll stop there and I appreciate the time to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Next, we have Bridget Stone.
I'm Bridget Stone and I live at eleven ten Allen's Creek Road, which is also directly across from this project. Uh, my husband and my four children and I have lived here since two thousand and five. We've lived here for eighteen years. Um, we were here when Gordy's was in operation, which was a completely different animal. It was a small repair shop, really. It wasn't even a convenient store. He sold a couple beverages and some auto supplies and things like that, but his focus was really repair. It wasn't even to sell gas. He was opened, he opened at seven in the morning until six. And there was, it was really a neighborhood kind of an operation where, um, we would all get our cars, you know, worked on there. And it was just, it's when the applicant is comparing that this has always been a gas station, this has always been the use, it's not the same. It's very different when you have a convenience store that is now all glass lit up from five in the morning until ten at night. You're selling beer, you're selling alcohol. Um, and you have this humongous canopy that's about the same size as the building. That's not even gonna let you see the building. It's gonna basically obscure the building. If you look at any of the site plans, you never see a straight-on look at the gas station because they don't want you to see it. Because you won't see the building. Every view in the site plan is a side view or an aerial view. Because you won't see the building. Um, and I also want to point out, and I think Megan pointed out as well, that I've learned a lot in this whole process because I found out about this project when I received a letter before the May Plan Planning Board meeting. It was like three days before the meeting. So in the last four months, I've learned a ton about how this process works. And I've also learned that I need to pay attention and be be better informed of these projects that are going on. Because these applicants had no intention of soliciting our feedback, meeting with us. Uh, it's right in the meeting, the meeting minutes. And I stated it in my letter that I said, well, I sent two letters, one to address the use variance and one to address the area variance. But I stated right in my letter that several different boards suggested that they reach out to neighbors and they said they had no plans to do so. Until we all showed up in May at the meeting that went until almost one o'clock in the morning. But few of us stayed on and spoke our piece. And that was the only reason that there was a Zoom meeting that was, as Megan said, forty minutes. It wasn't even forty, it was thirty. It just ended. It just abruptly ended. We had several questions that we were told we were going to get follow-up, no follow-up. A month later, I emailed one of the representatives and said, hey, like, you know, where are all those answers? So a couple of days later, we get some answers. He was also going to share the Zoom link because he recorded the meeting. And for some reason, he can't figure out how to do that either. I I just feel like this, they're avoiding us because they know that this is not right for this neighborhood. And I ask you to deny this variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mary Coblenz Boyd.
Hi, um, I'm Mary Boyd. Uh, my husband and I have lived, uh, for thirty-three years on Meadow Lane in the neighborhood. Uh, I will say that I agree with the previous objections. Um, but I would like to add, um, the previous Sunoco station was not profitable and thus closed and went out of business. So what is the business plan for making, um, a new gas station, new mini-mart profitable? I'd like to see a business plan. Maybe it's been, um, offered. I haven't seen it. Um, I may be late to this conversation. Uh, but I would like to know what the business plan is. And if the business fails, then what's next? What, what, what Pandora's box gets opened up uh, by a possible failure of a business? There are gas stations, um, uh, relatively close by. There's, uh, some at the corner of, uh, Monroe and Elmwood, Monroe and Allen's Creek, uh, and there, I'm sure there are others. But if the previous gas station was not profitable, what's the business case for making this one profitable? Uh, selling sundries, cokes, candy, alcohol, you know, alcohol has a high profit margin, sure. But, um, you know, is that enough to make it profitable? And if it fails, what, 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 what Pandora's box gets opened up? Um, my husband and I have been here, as I say, thirty-three years on Meadow Lane. It's a wonderful residential neighborhood. This particular proposal, it's not compatible with the neighborhood. Um, and there are all kinds of reasons, but it really comes, in my mind, comes down to, uh, incompatibility. And I would strongly urge you to deny their request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
This is Jason Ramza. I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good.
Uh, looks like there's someone named Linda with a hand.
Sorry, we have a a couple latecomers. Um, we have a Linda. Go ahead, Linda.
Hi, hello, this is Linda Stevenson. I live at twelve Creekdale Lane. Uh, I'm trying to start my video. Um, I wrote a long letter, uh, and submitted it yesterday. One point that people haven't talked about is the new apartment complex that's just, uh, eight ten, seven tenths of a mile up the road. Um, that's a concern for me for the increased traffic that's potentially, um, going to be able to occur. And when you look at the, uh, road where the gas station is and how small the gas station is and how many parking spaces they want and, um, the tankers coming in, um, and also the trucks for the beer, the trucks for the, what, uh, cigarettes, the trucks for the food, the trucks, they all, they have to come in, uh, when the store is open. So when you have those large trucks coming in during the day and you have increased traffic, then what everybody else has said about the danger to the children, the danger to people running, the, and nobody has mentioned the increased pollution. Um, th- these are serious concerns and the noise, everything about that whole scenario is very detrimental to our, our homes, our style of living, what we paid for, the taxes we pay, uh, and our safety. It's just not worth our safety to grant this, excuse me, but the nicest word I can think of is loosey-goosey plan, which isn't a plan, to say, hey, uh, we want to do this pretty much based upon numbers in the sand. So I, I don't think that the applicants are giving the neighbors the respect we deserve by giving us a plan that is solid. And I think the reason why they can't give us that plan that is solid is because there is no real solidity in anything that they're offering, given the size of the, of the gas station, what they want to do with it, what they're pro- uh, proposing to sell. It's just not a viable solution. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome and thank you.
We have Larry, I think, would like to, uh, comment.
Yes. First of all, I'm also Julie Jackson Ray, uh, with my husband Larry Ray. And I'd like to speak first briefly. I wrote a letter.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me, what, what is your address, please?
Thirty-eight sixty-one Elmwood Avenue. So we're on the corner of Brookside and Elmwood. Uh, we've been li- we've been at this address for thirty-two years. Um, I, you know, the one thing that is wonderful about Brighton is that they have been very responsible to our concerns in the past. And I'd like to point to the sidewalk that was not in the original plans for the redesign of the intersection at East Ave and Elmwood. However, with our, uh, the neighborhood input, um, it was included. And that was, I don't know how many years ago, Larry. But the fa- the point being, I never, the positive impact that sidewalk meant, I never could have anticipated how positive it was. People, uh, value this neighborhood as a, uh, we, it it has created the neighborhood by people being able to walk around it and everything. Now, on the opposite side of this is the fact that, so that's one thing that made a positive impact. I think, uh, I agree with the concerns of all the other speakers this evening in our neighborhood. The, and while it might be the interest of one person who bought this property and it's zoned office, uh, the impact of this, if this plan is you know, continues, it's going to be, I think we cannot even, we have a very good reason to be concerned about the negative impacts as have been outlined. And my husband, I think, will follow after.
Hi, this is Larry. Uh, as my wife Julie said, we've lived here for thirty-two years at the VA sixty-one Elmwood Avenue. I was actually looking, where is the nearest retail outlet along East Avenue from this site? If you head in towards the city, the first one is near, uh, when, when, there's nothing between East Avenue and Lynn, uh, Elmwood to, uh, Wynton. Going the other way, you gotta go a long, long way. It's basically, there's nothing until you get to Marsh Road. Now, if you head east-west, was it close? Now, if you head east-west, was it closest retail store? It's at Twelve Corners. Heading the other way, you've gotta go at least to Panorama Trail, and you have to get off of Panorama Trail or go all the way to Penfield. There's no retail outlets here. This is the only retail store within miles. This is residential. There's no need for another gas station. Plus, the town of Brighton has been pretty much trying to be environmentally conscious and promoting a lot of environmentally positive things. Having another gas station, we don't need another gas station. We're trying to get ourselves off of fossil fuels. This is going in the wrong direction. This is not, this is not the right step for Brighton to be taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. The public hearing is gonna remain open. And Rick, we can move on.
Yeah, that does for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman. I think we should just tell the people interested in these three applications that they will present hopefully at our next meeting, and you certainly have the right to speak again. Depending on what you hear as part of that public hearing, so apologize for you having maybe to come back a second time, but I hope you understand the situation and will certainly keep up to date on the activities of this board.
Okay, that's very good. Yes, okay. So Rick, at this point, I guess we move into old business. We have no new business, correct?
Correct. Old business we can just handle as part of our decision process, Mr. Chairman. I think if you wanna go right into making.
Sure, that'd be fine. That'd be fine. Okay. All right, does anyone need any kind of a break? Are we okay?
Just to confirm, there's no one to, no one here to speak on applications five A oh one and oh two?
Correct.
So we have to reopen the public hearing even if there was some.
Okay. Does anyone need a break? Are we okay?
Okay.
All right, good. That's good.
Dennis, before we go on, I just wanna make sure, Ken, can you get into, get in all right? I know you had an issue.
There we go. Thanks, Jason. Yeah, my power went out. It is now back on. So here I am.
You're down there in the South Woods, huh? Is there storms? Storms down there, Ken?
No, apparently a power line came down for no apparent reason and locked up seventeen hundred homes, but we're back up.
Okay, great. All right, well, we're about to proceed with the eight A oh one twenty-two. Okay, this is three, two, five Antlers Drive. Does anyone have concerns about this application related to the fence situation? This is just a rekindlement of last year's approval?
Judy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, if I missed, I'm not sure, but did they say that if they do go with vinyl, they really didn't describe what it was going to be?
Well, we.
Is it gonna match what they're?
Okay, Judy, we only heard her say that due to price and whatnot, that they were considering going to vinyl?
But they might go to wood?
Well, they were trying to do wood, and she said there was an excessive cost or delay or whatnot, and that's why they were concerning. But if she could get wood, I think that was my understanding of her preference.
I think Judy, I think the basic style is going to be the same, whether it's wood or vinyl.
Right.
Okay. And would it be the dark wood color, do you think?
I don't know what colors they would be getting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, does anyone have any concerns here other than what Judy just? Okay. All right, Mr. D.
Okay.
You're up.
All right. Well, it's just, yeah, my students call me, so it's funny. Okay, so, let's see, all right, let's see, I'll do this right. I move to approve application eight A zero one two two based on the following endings of facts. One, the property in question is on a corner lot on a busy road, and homeowners experience substantial road noise due to R G and E in the town removing trees and other shrubs that had previously reduced that road noise. Two, the requested six-point-five-foot tall fence would be in keeping with the fence height and style of their rear neighbor's fence and thus would not alter the character of the neighborhood. Three, the alleged hardship was not created by the applicants. The following conditions will apply. The variance only applies to the fence in the.
For a second, Matt?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Can you just add, can you just add a finding that the fence will still be substantially back from the front property line as shown at fifty-seven feet or something to that?
All right.
And maybe that it's, thus the variance isn't substantial or something like that?
Is that, okay. So is that okay that that goes after the alleged hardship?
Yeah. Anyway, make it finding.
All right, so so the, say that again one more time, Rick?
Finding the fact number four is just basically that the the variance is not substantial. The fence will be located a minimum of fifty-seven feet from the front property line.
Okay, that's, are you okay with that, Matt? You don't have.
Yeah, I'm just typing.
I'm sorry, Ken, we screwed that up, didn't we?
So variance is not substantial due to the fact that the fence will be fifty-seven feet from the property line?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead back with your conditions, please.
Okay, sure. The variance only applies to the fence in the style and location as per plans submitted and testimony given. And two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second?
Second, Judy.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion is to approve with condition, Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury? Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. De Augustine?
Yes.
Motion to approve, Karen.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, one down, a lot to go. Okay, all right. So the next application is one thirty-five Edsmore. This is the deck situation. Does anyone have concerns about this deck?
No.
Okay, I don't either. Heather?
Yep. I move that we approve application eight A oh two twenty-two based on the following findings of fact. One, the variance will not result in a substantial change in the neighborhood because the deck is in the rear of the house and will blend into the surrounding properties that have similar decks in the setback area. Two, the difficulty necessitating the variance cannot be solved in any other manner because the deck of thirteen by seventeen feet is what will meet the homeowner's needs and create safer access to their yard. Three, the requested variance is not substantial. It is six feet, leaving a thirty-four-foot setback. Four, the variance is the minimum necessary for safe access through the rear door and enjoyment in the, of the yard with enough space for the dining table, which is the purpose of the deck. Five, the variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood where there are multiple decks and houses are also built into the setback area where necessary. The approval will be subject to the following conditions. One, it is based on the application and the testimony provided. And two, will this require building permits?
Yeah.
Okay, so obtaining that the homeowners will obtain all necessary building permits.
I'll second, number right.
Okay, very good.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
De Augustine?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
The motion to approve the conditions, Karen.
Okay, the next one is the air conditioner on the side of one eleven Hampshire. Very narrow lots over there on Hampshire. So does anyone have any concerns about the placement of this air conditioner?
No.
Okay, I've got this. I move we approve application eight oh, eight eight oh three twenty-two based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed location is the only alternative which will meet the needs of the applicant on the lot. Two, the one-foot requirement of the variance in this proposed location is not significant and will be barely noticeable. Three, no negative effect on the character of the neighborhood will occur since many homes in the subject area have AC units on the sides of their homes adjacent to the property line. Conditions, the applicant, this variance is based on the testimony given and plans submitted as to the specific location of the air conditioner. All necessary permits shall be obtained. And number three, mitigation with landscaping shall be added to buffer the AC unit.
Dennis, in case they wanna do a fence, not.
Okay. Why don't we just say they will mitigate with either landscaping or fencing?
Or just, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yes, they did say, they said one or the other. Yes, you're right.
I'll second.
Thank you. Heather?
I'm sorry, who got the second on that?
The motion is to approve with condition, Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. De Augustine?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Motion to approve with condition, Karen.
Okay, the next three applications, the applicant requested tabling. We left the public hearing open. So I know Ed has recused himself from these. So Kathleen, you're next up. Would you be willing to offer that? Please? I think we could group them together, right?
Group them all together and just make the motion to table. Public hearing is left open.
All right, I move to table application eight A oh four, oh five, and oh six dash two-two based on the request of the applicant. The public hearing is, will remain open, and the testimony provided by residents shall be part of the record.
Second.
Motion is to table and leave the public hearings open for our applications eight A oh four, eight A oh five, and eight A oh six. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Ms. De Augustine?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to table and keep the public hearings open, Karen.
Okay. So what do you wanna tell us about the old business applications five A one and oh two?
Basically, I haven't heard anything from the applicant at this point in time. I know at the last month, they did say that they were working towards the resolution with the neighboring property, that the attorneys were involved trying to sort things out. I have not gotten an update since that time. I don't see a big issue with giving them one more month. But however, it's up to you guys whether or not you wanna carry it over, deny it without prejudice, deny it flat out, approve it. Kind of leave it at that.
Yeah, I definitely don't feel like we can approve it based on the testimony that they gave and sort of uncertainty around the parking. I would, I would vote to just deny it without prejudice for lack of information.
Rick, is there any indication, have they gone before the planning board?
No, they have not made application to the planning board because of the whole, I believe, just still because of the whole easement question.
Is there, is there a downside to just moving it to, to give them one more opportunity to come forward and let us know? Normally, I would support what Andrea said, but if they've reached out to you to let you know that they're trying to work something out?
Yeah, yeah, that is, there's no downside to that. I mean, giving them one more shot, you know. Usually, we try not to carry these things over too long, but we did hear from them last month saying that, you know, we are trying to work through things. Now, again, I haven't gotten an update since then, but I personally, staff, don't have a problem with keeping it open for one more month. I certainly can reach out to them and say, hey, this is what the board said. You got a month to figure this out or, you know, withdraw it or we'll make a, we'll make a decision on it, which might not be in your best interest.
Right, this is Judy. If we were to deny with prejudice, would there be enough left for them to make it a new, or would they have to make a new application? If so, would there be enough difference in it to really be a new application?
Well, they can come back with the exact same application.
They can't, okay.
Right.
Running them from doing that, hopefully, they would wait until they had a decision based on that easement situation.
Right, okay.
I think that particularly if attorneys are, I think it particularly if attorneys are involved, they should know that they need to contact us between meetings. And it sounds like there's been no correspondence between the most, our most recent meeting and this meeting. And the fact that there's not been, I think, is perfectly reasonable to dismiss it without prejudice. They can refile the exact same thing, but we shouldn't keep our docket clogged here with this when we aren't getting any contact. So that's my take on it.
Yeah, and just to follow up, Rick, can you confirm the timing? When you say that they said they were working on it, that was prior to the July meeting, right?
It was just prior to the July. Yeah, I mean, I heard from them like, you know, a day or two before the July meeting that the attorneys were working on it. And I heard that from the engineer.
And Rick, this is Ken. If I, I don't think at this point in time, I have, I don't think you have told them anything like, look, you better get in touch with us before the next meeting or else. I don't think we've delivered that kind of a message to them at this point in time. Would you agree with that?
I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing to think about is if it is denied without prejudice, and you can certainly do that, then the applicant is probably losing a month. We're probably not gonna hear this back in August. I mean, in September, what month is it? Good God. We're probably not gonna, we're probably not gonna hear about, hear from these folks until at least October. So we are not only delaying them, but we're delaying our own. And then we'll have to sort of get back up to speed on it a little bit. I mean, it's, either one is fine. I think Rick has pointed that out, but do think about the fact that if you do deny it without prejudice, it's unlikely they're gonna, when is the meeting, the application deadline for September, Rick?
It'll be next, it'll be two weeks from yesterday.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe they could get it in, but I would think, basically what we're doing is we're saying to them by denying it with prejudice, without prejudice, we're saying to them, fix your problem in two weeks or else you're pushed out until at least October or beyond. Otherwise, we said to them, we're just gonna push it on one more month, then we're saying you got. Otherwise, we said to them, we're just going to push it on one more month. Then we're saying, you got thirty days to figure this thing out. So that's sort of, that's sort of how I look.
I, I agree with that as well.
All right, folks. All right. So we have a couple people who think we should deny it without prejudice. The rest of you haven't exactly spoken, so, um, I, just my own personal opinion about it is, I think, you know, if we're going to allow them the other month, then Rick needs to make it clear to them that, uh, that they need to make a presentation or they can withdraw their application. They could do a lot of different things. But, yeah, I think the communication is important also and, you know, the respect for the process. So I, I would personally be okay with giving them another month as long as Rick makes it clear to them. What about, uh, who else hasn't? Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree with you, Dennis.
All right. Uh, who else? Matt?
Yeah, no, I, uh, yeah, I, I agree that we should, um, let them know, give them that, uh, thirty days.
Okay.
And, uh, then we can, we can deny next month if we don't hear from them.
Yeah, that would pretty much be the end, right? Okay. And how about, let's see, uh, Judy, you.
Judy, I agree with you, Dennis.
Okay, okay. So it sounds like we have the votes to do that then to, uh, to, um, continue. Now, Rick, do we need to do anything tonight then?
Don't we, why don't we make a motion to continue table on that?
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion then.
Or, yeah, keep, continue table it for additional information.
Okay, so, all right, so I move that we.
Hold on, can I, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead. Hold on, we got too many people talking. Go ahead and, Ken.
Thank you. Uh, once it matters on the table, you don't have to continue it on the table. You actually have to bring a motion on, bring it off the table. So it stays on the table.
Okay.
Procedure, you do not need to make a motion.
Thank you. That, that makes it even easier. Okay. And Rick obviously has heard our counsel to, uh, talk to the folks and I'm sure he will. Okay. Any other concerns, please? On this? Okay. All right. I guess we're finished.
Um, just, uh, for in regards to the, uh, the thirty-one oh eighty St. Avenue application, is there anything any members want from me? Um, yes, there were some previous applications made back in the late eighties and early nineties in regards to canopies. Um, let me know if there, if you want to see minutes from those or anything like that.
Um. Yeah, there was reference to those minutes and then they've not provided them to us, so I just.
The, the, the attorney did provide them as part of the attachment, but they were so massive that I, I wasn't going to get them out to you. If I, like, they came in yesterday. Uh, so they were going to get his letter up on the agenda, but I wasn't able to get all the correspondence along with that up. Um, so I certainly can get those reference minutes out to you. As far as the.
But if they're part of the record.
Yeah, I would like to see that if possible.
Yeah, do that.
Yep, that sounds good, Rick.
All right.
I, I know that we can all get to this information, but it might just be easier if, if we just had kind of a copy in our email. Can you provide, um, the allowable uses for that zone that, that it's in? Uh, cause I know it's office, but obviously it's more expansive than just office. So do you mind providing that, like, just a copy of that code provision via email to the group?
Yeah, I'll send you a link to the, the code online that takes the right to that.
That's good. Okay, very good.
Hey, uh, Dennis and Rick, once the meeting is adjourned and the recording is stopped, could you guys stay on Zoom with me to just chat about a couple procedural issues?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, and we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, all great for next month, please?
Yes.
Yeah, how's everybody looking? Good? All right, great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Jason, keep, uh, turn the, you can turn the recording off and then keep everybody, just keep the meeting going.